Hello and welcome to this special budget study session. Today, June 11th. For the city of Eureka, we're glad you're all here. Nice to see your smiling faces. And with that, we will turn it over to...
We need a roll call.
We need a roll call?
We do.
I have no agenda? Are we in it? No.
Mayor Burgel?
Here.
Councilmember Castellano?
Here.
Councilmember Moulton?
Here.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Bauer?
Here.
Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
Here.
Thank you. And with that, we will turn it over to Finance Director Millar for a presentation.
Good evening. This is the second budget presentation for the fiscal year 2425 proposed budget. At the last regular council meeting, we went over the major funds, including the general fund. I focused on kind of the big picture. When we're looking at revenues in the general fund, I think, or what I focused on was sales tax. It is the largest revenue source of the general fund. It's been flat. So that tells us that things are a little bit tighter than they were a couple of years ago. And then on the expenditure side, the theme was the labor agreements and how salaries and benefits are going up almost across the board. In addition, cost allocation or the overhead, so things like the cost to maintain our fleet, insurance products, you know, operations like finance and HR, those are going up and those are hitting the department's budgets. So tonight, the focus will be back on the general fund. And instead of categories of expenses and revenues, we're going to focus on departments and divisions. The second section will be a analysis of Measure H and the impacts. This is a good time to kind of focus on Measure H. It has significantly changed operations in a very positive way. It's made us more financially sound. But I think we're at a point where growth has kind of slowed down. And I believe that we will plateau at this point in terms of growing staff and operations and incorporating new services. And then finally, we'll talk about next steps in the budget process. And then we have representatives from each department in the room to answer any questions. So to begin, so if we're looking at the general fund expenditures by departments, I've made this pie graph. This pie graph represents about $44 million in spending. You can see that the largest slice of pie is the police department, followed by Humboldt Bay Fire, then community services, transfers. These are monies that go to streets and facilities. Then we have public works. We have our CAPE and Care programs, development services, non-departmental, and then debt service. So here, we are comparing the 2324 adopted budget to the 2425 proposed budget. You can see at the bottom that we expect growth to be about 6.6%. Starting at the top, we have our police department, the largest department in the general fund. The police department is made up of two divisions, enforcement and communications or dispatch. When we look at enforcement, you'll notice a growth rate that is less than average. That might be confusing, but really, that is being influenced by a reduction in our unfunded liability payments. We have a purse plan specifically for safety officers. The entirety of those payments come out of the police's budget. Fortunately, we expect that to go down by about $300,000 next fiscal year. But unfortunately, it'll go right back up the following fiscal year. Communications, so we are expecting above-average growth in dispatch. We did give our dispatchers an additional increase in the labor agreement. Next, we have Humboldt Bay Fire. So they're going up by about 350,000 or four and a half percent. We expect salaries and benefits to increase in their budget as well. The good thing is that we are currently updating the agreement with the Humboldt Fire District number one. We are shifting the cost share. That shift will provide some savings in this category. Community services, they have a number of different divisions within the general fund. You know, these growth rates really reflect the changes in those labor agreements. There are some outliers. Adult Recreation, they're actually reducing their temp salaries as well as some outside services. And then in youth, it's going up a little more than average. And that's because during the year, we added a preschool teacher or a part-time preschool teacher. This next category is not really a department, but this represents monies that we spend on projects as well as a subsidy. So in 2425, we expect to increase the monies for street projects to about 2.5 million. This is consistent with one of our budget policies. For facility improvements, that's actually going down to half a million, which is also consistent with our budget policies. In the current fiscal year, we were subsidizing operations at the harbor as well as our building departments. Next year, we're going to remove the subsidy for building and just have the one for harbor. Public Works. So Public Works has, you know, about seven different divisions. A lot of these divisions are shared, or the costs are shared with the water and wastewater operations. You know, a lot of the growth rates are expected. We do have some ones that are going down. Sometimes when we lose staff or, you know, higher-level staff that have specific roles, when they're replaced, we might replace them with different types of staff. In this case, we had a higher-paid staff member that was sharing his time between stormwater and traffic. He unfortunately is no longer working for us. And we did a small reorg during the fiscal year and redistributed some salaries and benefits. So that's why stormwater and traffic are showing decreases. CAPE and Care. They're going up quite a bit. But when we kind of dive into these new divisions that we have, you know, when I talked about how Measure H has provided a lot to the city and allowed us to expand services, this is really what I'm talking about. You can see that both of these divisions now have over 15 full-time employees. The budget is going up quite a bit, but so are the grant monies that support these programs. So next fiscal year, we expect these two divisions to cost about 1.9 million, but about 48% of that budget is being covered by outside sources. Another change that's happening with CAPE and Uplift is that that is going to go under the Finance Department to be paired up with our Housing Division. We think we can be more efficient by matching these operations and by allowing finance to take over a lot of the administrative burden from operating those grants. Development Services, you know, it's almost matching the growth of the general fund. There's no major changes. Most of the growth is due to salaries and benefits. Non-departmental, so these are things like electricity for shared areas that we can't pin to one department, as well as contributions to outside organizations, as well as our marketing contract. That marketing contract is being reallocated to support a communications division. So that division is in Fund 650 and not in the general fund. So that is why you see this big decrease in this section of the budget. And then debt service, we went over this last time. We currently have two leases for fire apparatus. And we just received that second ladder truck. Onto the next section, Measure H impacts. So what is Measure H? It's a voter-approved local sales tax at a 1 and 1/4% rate. It was approved on the November 3rd, 2020 ballot. And it replaced Measure Q, which was a half-cent sales tax.
So Director Millar, can I step in and just make...
Sure.
I wanted to make some clarification on this. I've had many communications with community members and there's a lot of misinformation out there. I know that you have heard from public commenters about how when we first reported on Measure H, we reported at a certain, I think it was $7 million. That was extra. I forget what the exact number was. The reason for that is there's confusion about Measure Q and what used to be Measure O and what Measure H was. So Measure O was a tax ballot measure that was put in front of the voters in 2010. It had a sunset of five years. That ballot measure went from 2011 to June of 2016. In 2014, knowing that that tax measure was going to sunset, we went to the community again and wanted to re-up that tax measure for another five years. And so in 2014, we went to the voters and re-upped that half-cent tax measure. And that went from July 2016 to June 2021. At that point in June 2021, that measure went away. At that same time, the Measure H kicked in. But the half-cent of that 1.25 from Measure H was already accounted for and been spent by the city, for the most part, on public safety between 2011 and 2021. So when Director Millar was reporting on that, what he was reporting on was the new monies that came from Measure H, because that half-cent was already spoken for and a part of the budget, and it wasn't reduced, it wasn't taken away. It was always there. But the reporting was done on that additional 0.75 that was above and beyond that half-cent. I can't tell you how many times I've explained that, but yet there's still misinformation out there about how somehow we are hiding some sort of funds in some way, shape, or form. It's not the case. That half-cent had been a part of our budget, as it had been since 2010 all the way to 2021. So I just want to make that clear. And if anybody has any questions, you likely have my cell phone number and you can call me.
So why was Measure H placed on the ballot? There's a long list of reasons. So police, fire, emergency medical response, youth and senior services, local business and job support, street repair and road safety, community health services, homeless prevention programs, parks and recreation, debt reduction, and other essential services. How much does Measure H contribute? So the 2425 estimate is about 12.5 million. 12.5 million represents about 30% of the general fund revenues. When we're looking at increases to sales tax revenues, Measure H added approximately $7.5 million when compared to Measure Q. So how has Measure H impacted city operations? And this can be a hard question to answer because Measure H is a general tax. It's not a special tax. Special taxes are restricted, and they're typically put into their own fund to be tracked separately. General taxes can really be used for any service in the general fund, but that list that I showed you earlier is really where we're investing Measure H dollars. I think the best way to see how the city has utilized Measure H is to compare the proposed budget to the budget back when we had Measure Q. So tonight, the data that I will be showing you is how Measure, or the changes to different functions within the general fund in terms of dollars spent. So I've rearranged some categories. These are not consistent with city departments or divisions, but in some cases they are. The first one is public safety. That captures EPD, communications, fire, code enforcement, and our Emergency Operations Center division. This next category, street repairs and road safety, is made up of streets, traffic, stormwater, and the monies that we provide for street projects. Other general fund, sorry to use the word "other," these are important functions, include public works admin, engineering, community services admin, harbor maintenance, development services, and non-departmental. Recreation is adult recreation, youth recreation, and the Adorni Center operations. Parks is parks. That is one division within community services. Health and homelessness has to do with our Care/Uplift programs. I'm sorry, CAPE/Uplift and then Care. The Zoo is the Zoo. Facility improvements represents monies that we set aside for exactly that, and then subsidies. So back in fiscal year 2021, you'll notice that we were operating or investing money in a lot of these categories. And then we got Measure H, and today, we have some additional categories. You can also notice that in some of these categories, or some of these categories have grown and grown substantially. Public Safety, since fiscal year 2021, has added about $5.3 million to their budgets. So where has that $5.3 million gone? About 53% goes to EPD, 20% to Fire, 14% to Dispatch, 10% to Code Enforcement. And then the EOC has gone down because in fiscal year 2021, we are actually operating the EOC because of the pandemic.
Can I just, I just want to make it clear that for the public, it may be hard to understand. What we're looking at here is basically the fiscal year of 2021 and the fiscal year of 2420. This is not a cumulative increase over those four years. This is comparing one year to one year. And that $5 million increase is the difference in that one-year budget for these categories. It's not cumulative.
Next, in the category of street repair and road safety, this category is the second-largest in terms of dollar amount. It's grown by about 3.5 million. This includes projects or monies for street projects, the Streets Division, stormwater and traffic. Streets and stormwater and traffic haven't actually grown. What happened was that these operations were being paid for in our gas tax fund and our RMRA fund. Those monies are typically spent on projects, but before Measure H, we relied on those funding, or that funding to support operations. It did not go to the improvement of the street infrastructure. But today, as you can see, we've invested a lot of that Measure H money into improving streets. In Public Works, we have a GIS coordinator. Her name is Maggie Martinez. She made this great map. This is something that I'd like to share on the budget page. It does not like PowerPoint very well in terms of how it, how, you can't read anything, so let me zoom in a bit. So there are streets on that map in yellow and then two shades of blue. What's in yellow represents about a 10-year period within, or, and this period was before Measure H. We were able to improve about 14 miles of street prior to Measure H within that 10-year period. Since then, we're anticipating about 32 miles will be complete, or completed by the end of fiscal, or calendar year 2024.
Excuse me, Director Millar?
Yeah.
If, could you clarify the difference between streets and projects?
Yeah, so let me...
Thank you.
Yeah. So when I say streets, typically I'm referring to the projects, so the big projects that we do for paving. If you look in the budget, this might be indicated as pavement maintenance. It could be something like Henderson Center improvements. There are different names for different street projects, but typically, when I talk about it in the budget, I'm capturing all the monies that are used for street improvements. So I might interchange the word streets or projects, but the point is that those monies are going to not support personnel or salaries and benefits, but to pay contractors to do paving.
And it does not include, this is general fund, well, this is not, but the numbers that he was talking about is general fund dollars going toward those projects, not any of the grant funding, correct?
Correct.
So that still isn't clear. So projects are 70%, streets are 28%, so I'm...
Oh, I see. Okay, there's a division in Public Works called the Streets Division.
Thank you.
Sorry. Okay.
That's basically staff and supplies for the Street Division.
So here, I've zoomed in again, and you can see essentially how, within just a few years, how much more ground we've covered because of the increases to street projects. This is something, or this category is something that we didn't have before Measure H. This includes CAPE and Care. You know, we are spending Measure H dollars on those operations, but again, about 50% of their budget is being covered by outside sources. So we're essentially leveraging that Measure H investment by essentially doubling what we're putting into it. The Zoo is an interesting category because it's showing a decrease. We've not actually used Measure H monies in this category, but I do want to highlight something. Back in fiscal year 1819, so this was before the pandemic started, because what happened was in March of '20, we essentially shut down the zoo. So I don't think fiscal year 1920 is a good comparable. So 1819 was probably the last normal year of operations prior to the Canopy Walk. You can see in fiscal year 18...
Redwood Skywalk, Director Millar.
You can see in fiscal year 1819 that the Zoo is subsidized by almost $900,000 from the general fund. Fast forward to the proposed budget of 2425. Revenue has grown by almost a multiple of five. Expenditures have also grown. That's because when you incorporate new exhibits, like the Canopy... Bear and Coyote, you do have to increase staffing and you do have to invest in keeping those exhibits in working form. So since 1819, that subsidy has dropped by almost $300,000, which I think is very good news. And also, it's pretty incredible to go from just under $400,000 a year to almost 2.25 million. So the last thing I want to show with this data is how it looks when you compare it on a bar chart. So you can see very clearly on this chart where Measure H dollars have gone. These two bars on the left, public safety, as well as the street repair and road safety category, represent about 73% of that total net increase. So what this is telling us is that every dollar that the city, or every additional dollar that the general fund is receiving since Measure H, has gone into these two categories. That's public safety and street repairs. So that concludes the Measure H section.
Can I just make one comment on the Park section?
Yeah.
Director Millar, I didn't cover the...
Oh.
Measure H has been huge for parks, while it relatively doesn't look in the grand scheme that much. But we've probably increased our staffing in parks by 30% since Measure H. We've got a dedicated maintenance worker in Old Town, a dedicated maintenance worker along the waterfront trail. It's made significant increases. And then from a project standpoint, it's been huge as well. Carson Park wouldn't have been done without Measure H. Highland Park, which will be done by the end of June, wouldn't have been done without Measure H. It's been invaluable to our quality-of-life facilities and programs as well.
And I apologize. I did not mean to skip over Parks. I just didn't have a green box around it. It does represent, or what has changed with the Parks Division is that they have added about four full-time positions. And in addition, there's been a lot more money spent on services to improve landscaping. You know, money's spent on replacing playground equipment. So we have made a relatively large investment in this category. It's, you know, essentially doubled in size. So next steps in the budget process. So next time, at the next regular council meeting, I will go over the major fund expenditures by departments. And then we, I will request or recommend that we adopt the 2425 budget. So that concludes my presentation. I would be happy to answer questions. And you also have the departments in the room to speak on the behalf of their budgets.
So do we have any questions? Councilmember Moulton?
Thank you, Director Millar, for the informative presentation as always. Forgive me if you covered this, but why the 40% reduction in facilities?
It was kind of understood that that would start to shrink over time. We kind of took advantage of a budget that was more prone to surpluses. So we were putting, you know, additional monies into the projects that City Manager Slattery mentioned, like Carson Park. He probably knows more about this subject than I do, but the reason why it's gone to half a million is that's really a placeholder so that we have monies to pay debt service payments or something that will support that Public Works Operations Center, as well as some improvements to City Hall and potentially the muni as well. So the idea is that at this point, it's going to stay at about half a million per year, hopefully for every year going forward.
Yeah, and a lot of the projects in the first few years of Measure H, we were more in the 800 to a million-dollar range for those fiscal years. We've dropped it this year in preparation, you know, for the Ops complex. That money is going to be used to pay off any sort of bond that we get. And the idea would be to get not only enough money for the Ops complex, but also a capital fund for these other projects that need to be done down the road. And that would be used as the funds to pay for the annual payments of that debt. Obviously, for the Ops complex, a lot of that funding will be coming from enterprise funds because it has a lot to do with water and wastewater, and only a portion of it will be from general fund.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Castellano?
I was curious, when you spoke to EPD's reduction in unfunded liability payments, that it's going to... that it's going to go down and then go up. Can you just explain why?
Sure. So Calpers has an investment portfolio, and every year they earn or lose a certain amount of money. And that rate isn't applied right away. What they do is there's typically three years before that change to the portfolio hits our unfunded liability payment. You may remember that what happened during COVID was a huge market correction, and then it quickly went back up. I believe in fiscal year 1920, Calpers returned about 21%, which is very unusual. Their goal is about 7.75% per year. So that, that one year with that large return essentially reduced those future unfunded liability payments. Unfortunately, since then, the returns have been lower. So what that does is it essentially kicks it back up.
And we were at one point looking at some, I'm forgetting exactly what they were, but alternative strategies around those unfunded liabilities. And then with that increase, it didn't make as much sense to pursue those. Is that something we might be looking at again in the future?
Absolutely. So what happened with the, so that's called a pension obligation bond. And what happened was after the war in Ukraine started, there were other things going on in the economy, but that was essentially when we started to see inflation take off. And the way you, or the Federal Reserve deals with inflation is that they increase interest rates. Before, you know, COVID, interest rates are extremely low and low enough where pension bonds make sense. But since then, rates are still too high to consider that an option. But, you know, things change, and if they go down again, we would look into that.
Any further questions? Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
Did you want to go first? Okay. With the projections for the budget for this next year, how, since we're still in negotiations for different salary groups and stuff like that, how have you kind of figured that into, this, how have you calculated that, I guess, is what I'm wondering?
Typically, I base it off, I mean, I'm pretty aware of what these potential changes will be, and I take what I typically take something close to other agreements, I guess. Or I, I don't want to give away too much because it is a sensitive conversation, but I anticipate something that will probably capture those increases within a there's like a margin of error that I would assume. You know, but I'm pretty confident that I wouldn't miss the mark by too much or by enough that it would be a substantial difference, I guess.
So the projections that we have here, how much is your margin of error? How is it, have you gone over and above it? Or I'm just trying to get some kind of idea since we don't know that yet?
I do believe it probably is more accurate than not. I think, yeah.
Can I ask one more question, too? Percentages, I was trying to remember, so I was looking at the amount going to EPD and the amount going to Humboldt Bay Fire. I'm trying to remember what percentage of Humboldt Bay Fire the city picks up if we were 55 or six, what are we, 60?
Currently, in the 24 or 23, 24, it's 65%, but in 24, 25, we're assuming 62.5%.
Okay, so is that number that you have here based off of that estimation for potential?
Yes.
Increases as well as that decrease in overall percentage commitment for the city?
They're essentially working against each other.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Thank you. I, I'm curious, on one of the slides, you had fiscal year 2021, and there were, or sorry, facilities improvements absent, but then for 2425, there were 500,000. So I was curious what the increase was there.
We never put money into facilities back then. We didn't have any of it. So literally, I was in community services from its inception to 2013. We used to have a total of $5,000 in our capital improvement fund for all of our parks. That was the, the total amount that was budgeted for our parks from 2012, 13, all the way up until I left, which was fiscal year 1920.
And so could you help clear up what those facility improvements might go towards?
So we've done a lot of different work. You know, some of the, obviously, we did Carson Park, we did Highland Park. We are working on improvements for the fire station three, hopefully headquarters as well, if the money will go that far. God, I'm trying to think of all the work that we did.
Well, you don't have to give me all of it, but.
Well, no, but there was a bigger, I'm just trying to think.
I'm hearing murmurings of the muni.
The roof? Well, we're going to do the paint job at the Orfinger. Anyway, there's been a lot of deferred maintenance that has been taken care of since this has been passed, that's for sure.
Okay, no, I appreciate that clarity on that.
Oh, a portion of it went to the Skywalk, actually. So the first year that it happened, we were short 300 and something thousand, and that monies went to fill the gap for the Redwood Skywalk. And then a portion of it also went into the Bear and Coyote exhibit as well.
And then I know we've got increase, at least with what we seem to be matching with outside funds for, for mental health staffing and the services we provide through Cape and Care. I'm just curious how, how we're planning for, for any cuts that we may see at the state level potentially for any of those grants and how we might be prepared for that.
So we just met on that today. Project Manager Davis brought up a couple of opportunities that we have currently. Right now, we have grant funding to go for at least another year. Some of our positions are two. Obviously, our main positions, especially in Care, Cape and Uplift, and Cape and Uplift, the vast majority of our full-time positions are general funded. And Care currently are managing mental health condition Rosen is general funded. The other positions are currently grant funded. We are still working with the county, and they have approved us as a service provider to implement their mental health response. We haven't come to a contract yet. So that would, you know, is something that's still outstanding. But there's an encampment resolution grant that's coming up that we're looking at some funding for, for a mental health condition, caseworker. And we obviously have a Care Star grant currently now that we're hoping to continue to pursue. So the, the main money that the state is getting, H hap is the big program that we've received funding from all three rounds, have we not?
Yeah.
And the fourth round was cut in this, and so that would likely have more of an effect on Cape and Uplift, which isn't that significant because a lot of that is general funded currently. It would hurt our housing assistance funding.
That was the question I was going to have next. Is, are any of those grants at the state level potentially going, or lack of grants at the state level going to potentially impact our housing?
The housing assistance program, likely. But we do believe that there's alternative sources for, for grant funding out there.
Okay, so we're looking elsewhere then?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for that. And then with trying to figure out how to phrase this, as we're making projections for revenue and such, and we're planning for, what is it? The, I want to call them negotiations. The JPA with Humboldt Bay Fire. How are we planning for that while there's still an unclear labor issue there, I guess, is what I'm trying to, yeah.
Well, I think Councilmember Deloche answered that question. We're pretty confident we're going to be just fine in that area. You know, that is the only, I was going to say that that's a small portion relatively to all the rest of our units who all have agreements in place. We're hoping that's going to be the case for that soon. And I think that based on the amount, there's, there's leeway for that. And I think that the Director Millar has taken that into account. The agreement itself, the, the JPA board has provided direction to move forward with the 62 and a half, 30, what would that be, 37.5 ratio? As opposed to the 6040 to go forward with that. It hasn't been approved yet, but they've provided direction to go in that route.
Thank you.
Anything further? So how do you want to do this? Do you want to bring up individual department heads or?
Only.
Sure. So we'll open this item up to public comment. I just have an agenda here. The public shall be provided an opportunity to speak only on items that are listed on the special agenda meeting, meeting agenda. Pursuant to City Council Resolution 201122, City Council policy is to limit each speaker to three minutes. Such time allotment or portion thereof shall not be transferred to other speakers. Anybody here to speak in public comment? Okay. Anybody on Zoom? Great. Okay, well, seeing no one then. Is there anything further? Councilmember Castellano?
Sorry, I was saving comments for, I don't know, I thought we were only doing questions, so I was holding myself back.
Thank you.
Okay, great. First, thank you, Director Millar. Appreciate the presentation. You know, there's just a couple of things that I, I don't know if now is exactly the right time, but we're talking about the budget, so I just wanted to go ahead and bring it up. I do, I would like for us to consider more, and I know that we just hired someone to help provide maintenance for Old Town and, you know, kind of cleaning and things like that. I just think that we're inviting so many people to our community, like our, our summer events are huge. I would love to see us staff that kind of maintenance work even more so. So I just want to put that out there. And then, you know, maybe this is a question. I know we're not talking much about at this budget meeting, you know, this is more department-based, but, you know, like the kind of other supports we do in the community, like participatory budgeting and, you know, the organizations we support and things like that. Will that be presented at a future budget meeting?
Yeah, that can be a topic that I include at the next or budget adoption.
And we have received letters like we have in the years past already. And so they've, you know, the Film Commission, Area One Agency have all submitted letters requesting their same allotment. And then to get to your point on the Old Town, we are rapidly developed, as quickly as we can, the Old Town stewards program. And at our July 16th meeting, we'll be presenting on that, and it'll be up and running as well. So that will help with some of the Old Town stuff you're talking about.
Thank you. And then related to the future meeting, I was just curious, kind of some of the updates on the TOT and the Housing Trust Fund and, and those kinds of projects. Would that be a good time to talk about those things as well?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Did you have a comment? Okay. So seeing no further comments. I'm sorry, since there was no direction before we started the meeting, I'm curious, are, are department heads coming up to speak this afternoon or no?
They're here just, if there's any specifics that we can't answer, or you want to ask somebody directly, they're available to answer any questions if you'd like to talk to any other department heads or chiefs.
Okay. Well, since question time has passed.
I'm sure somebody could get creative and form a comment in the form of a question.
Okay, any questions for department heads? Go ahead.
Actually, I was just wondering if we might be able to ask if any of the department heads would like to contribute or add any information because I feel like I didn't have a whole lot of preparation for this coming into it, and so I don't really know what to ask. But I feel like this is a good opportunity if they would like to talk with us. Is there a way that we could offer that opportunity?
Certainly. Would any department heads choose to come up and speak on behalf of their departments? Great. Well, with that, if there's nothing further, this meeting's adjourned.